Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day, Maloney and Moore's Presidium, Anti Colorado. I am the Chief Judge of Consul Court. Today, we're going to continuously go on with our same subject matter. Today's subject matter is to continuously understand the power of statehood. To continuously understand how we must now put things in proper, consensual order. So, we must start understanding, what do we do about having the proper status? As we already know, Moors, the past ten, twenty, thirty years, even going back to nineteen thirteen and beyond, Moors have constantly been trying to put on the record our status as Moors. And unfortunately, we've been receiving resistance as Moors. Resistance from who? Resistance from our own, and resistance from the United States of America and the several states. However, now that the internet has come to the record, and what's the record? Nineteen ninety-one. The internet now disclosed a lot of what was called secrets, illuminating secrets. All these people taking death oaths not to let any of the Moors know that they were Moors. Not to let United States of America citizens know that they're actually standing on Morocco. This is what you call a state of fact. So today, we'll continuously keep talking about our sovereign rights as Moors, and how do we secure those sovereign rights? We secure those sovereign rights through the state. The ICJ has spoken, we must have a state. United Nations has spoken, we must have a state. So today, we'll keep talking about, how do we secure the sovereign rights of our state? How do we secure our matriarchal council, who's controlling the pan of legislation? How do we protect the executive branch, who puts together the administration? All of the executives who are over their different department heads? How do we protect all that? The answer is Consul Court. As we learned in the ICJ of France versus the United States of America, the ICJ gave us a little bit of a test. They said, "What's the answer on how you get the United States of America to abide by the law?" And that is what Consul Court. However, we all know you can't have a Consul Court without a state, and you can't have a state without a constitution. So we'll keep talking about that today. So keep in mind, today is Class 24. Class 24, what did we learn in Class 23? We started reading what was called the International Justice Handbook, which is some of their statutes or some precedent of cases that they now give an opinion and a judgment on. And one of those cases that we studied was Germany versus the United States of America. Not Germany versus United States. Why is it United States of America? Because United States of America is on the record as being the state on international law level. However, domestically, the United States of America operates as the United States, two separate entities, and not to be confused. So as Moors start understanding how to deal with the United States of America, who's a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, and then start dealing with their third state called the United States, and then start to deal with their several fifty states that they call now the States of, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is how we deal with them, through Consul Court. Who else are we dealing with? The municipal corporations. They are also parties to the States, all caps, which means they're bound to the Treaties of Peace and Friendship, which means all municipal corporations also bound to the United Nations Charter. So if we keep studying how to use Consul Court to our advantage, I need Moors to understand something. We must always be de jour. Remember, the ICJ threw France's so-called Consul Courts out. Why? They were de facto, right? They were compromised. The ICJ threw the United States of America's Consul Courts out. Why? They were de facto. Why? They were compromised. And the United States of America did not have the original jurisdiction of Moroccan law. Okay, so who's left? Only the Moors. Which means the Moors must also be de jour. So we're going to talk about that today, alright? Okay, so as I open up most of the classes, we're going to always continuously remind ourselves, what is the mission and vision? To create the United States of Morocco again, right? Because Moors always had government here in the land of Morocco, but we were usurped, we were conquered. So Moors must start understanding, how do we get back to the sovereign, secure rights of our sovereignty? Well, we must start studying politics. Politics comes through your state. So let's keep studying about that, alright? So, Moors at home, how are we going to solve this problem? The problem is easy. It starts with discipline. Discipline determines our destination as Moors. With that discipline, when we determine our destination, and what is the destination? To create the United States of Morocco again. To absorb the United States and the United States of America into Morocco. To put them back in their proper status and have a privileged jurisdiction only with their citizens of the United States of America. However, on the record, the United States of America is bankrupt and is solvent. So what's going to happen to the United States of America? At some point, they will get absorbed into Morocco. Right now, they're pretending as if they're the United States, and they are not. The United States as of eighteen seventy-one is ten miles square, which is called what? District of Columbia, ten miles square. That's all the United States is, claiming a false jurisdiction over the entire northwest of Mexico. But guess what? It's Moors' responsibility to get back to this sovereign status. And how do we do that? With discipline. Because discipline is going to determine our destination. But what is that destination all about? It's about this desire. The desire of creating states, one state at a time. And us coming into an alliance as Moors collectively. And Moors start to onboard states all across northwest of Mexico. We will eventually create the United States of Morocco again. A political status, alright? But how do we achieve that ultimate goal? Alright, let's talk about that today. In video number twenty-three, I mentioned that Moors out there who are studying international law, who are using now the fundamentals of using international law to their advantage. Moors cannot put together writs, affidavits, claiming to have a state provincial government, knowing they don't have a state provincial government. What is that called? It's called being de facto. Mother, could you read de jour?
De jour, upright, legitimate, lawful, by right and just title. In this sense, it is the contrary of de facto, which see, it may also be contrasted with degration, in which case it means as a matter of fact, as degration means by grace or favor. Again, it may be contrasted with secutate, here meaning by law, as the latter means by equity. See government.
Thank you, Mother. So de jour means what? Legitimate. Legitimate what? Government. Moors have to understand this. Moors have to put things back in proper sequential order. We have to put the horse in front of the cart. Moors have been out here dealing with pain, so we've been excited about just putting together writs and affidavits, throwing anything out there hoping that it sticks. The reality is, everything we've been doing is an exercise to get our minds prepared to start understanding how do we defend our sovereign rights as Moors. We never knew how to defend ourselves. We always use some type of attorney to put us in a pro se status that admitted the jurisdiction of a de facto government called the United States and their several states. So now that Moors are coming back into the consciousness, what do we do now to put things in proper sequential order? Here's what we must do. State's status determines destiny. I say again, the state's status determines destiny. What does that mean? We're not talking about your nationality right now. We already assume nationality, check that box. Now you put together government. But we have to put things in proper sequential order. We're talking de jour. What are we talking about? Step one, Moors state constitution, that's what we need. Step two, Moors state. Step three, Moors government. The state puts together the government. Step four, Moors, three branches of government. Once you have a government, you must have your three branches. What are those three branches? Which is four, eight. Your executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch. What does the executive branch put together out of their several departments, right? Secretary of State. What does Secretary of State deal with? Foreign affairs. Secretary of State deals with affairs even with their own Moors nationals as well as other foreign nationals. Then you put together your consul general. So the consul general and Secretary of State work hand in hand. But the consul general and Secretary of State through the executive branch puts together consulates. So Moors out there have been putting in the work. I applaud the work Moors have been putting in. But the reality is, everything we've been doing is counterproductive. We're just spinning our tires, not going anywhere. We have action, but no forward action. Why? We're missing the constitution. Everything is about constitution. So wait, let's get back to this consulate. Moors say they're on the record, say they have a consulate, but how can you have a consulate when you never have a consul general? That consul general came from the secretary who came from the executive branch. But how can you have the executive branch without the three branches of government? And these three branches of government for Moors governments came from the state. You can't have a state unless you got a constitution. So Moors have to put things back in sequential order. We also must understand, what does consulate mean? A consulate is your sovereignty abroad and another foreign jurisdiction, another host country. So if Moors were in China, Moors need a consulate in China. To do what? Represent the sovereignty of our constitution and state. But China doesn't have consulates in China for Chinese. China has consulates in Russia. China has consulates in Mexico. China has consulates in the jurisdiction United States of America. So why would Moors need consulates in Morocco? Northwest of Mexico, to be specific. The reason why we think we need consulates is because when we've been studying documents, we've seen the word consul, we started recognizing consulate notification access, started talking about consulates. Understanding that this is a solution. But this solution cannot be realized until we start with number one. Number one now sets up, number four. So the first thing we need to have, if in fact we ever want consulates abroad and someone else's jurisdiction. Keep in mind, jurisdiction is Morocco. We don't need consulates in Morocco. We need consulates in China, in Mexico, in Colombia, in Brazil. We need consulates in Great Britain. So Moors right now should understand, the state's status determines destiny. Destiny of what? Consulates. Without a state, there is no consulate. Without a constitution, there is no consulate. Without a de jour Moors government, there is no consulate. Moors must understand, we have been usurped, we've been conquered. But we must all get back to international law now. And according to international law, treaties cannot be self-executed. You must understand, if you're going to execute a treaty, it must come through what? Your Moors state that has a constitution that outlines your latitude longitude. The Moors state creates the consulate. Consulate can't create a state. We must put things in proper sequential order. So what's happening right now with Moors? Right now, Moors are off balance. Negative and positive, equals hex alpha when you put them together. But right now, Moors are out of balance. We got to put things back in sequential order and have balance. It's positive that we're trying to put brakes on this thing. What are we trying to do? Reclaim our jurisdiction. But we're working in a negative status because it's counterproductive, because we have lack of knowledge of understanding international law. But once we put that desire along with our discipline of understanding international law, we will create hex alpha. We will have balance once again, alright? So today, we're talking about de jour writs from Consul Court. I preface this by saying, de jour writs from Consul Court. What makes you a de jour government? What gives you your de jour status for Moors at home studying? I call it the circle seven. Circle seven, de jour writs from Consul Court. And what are they? The first one is your state of facts and judicial notice. What is that? That comes through your Consul Court, putting on the record to a third state or any other foreign state or municipal corporations, your state of facts. What's the state of facts? These other six exhibits. What's the first exhibit? Your constitution, that's Exhibit A. To Moors at home, you have your cover page, Exhibit A. What's Exhibit A? Your constitution. That's Exhibit A, which is a state of facts. State, state. You're showing them what? The facts of your state. And your state has a constitution. Exhibit B, state seal. What is your state seal? Here's your state seal. Just like that, your state seal. Exhibit C, your state flag. What's your state flag? Here's your provincial state flag here. Your state flag now is in harmony with what? Exhibit D, Morocco's flag. You can even put Morocco Empire flag. What is that? You're working on the sovereignty of Morocco, okay? So you have a provincial government, excuse me. Provincial government here. Exhibit C is your provincial state flag of your provincial state government. But where is that? Where do you derive? Your delegation authority orders. Political delegation of authority orders. From Morocco, the sovereignty comes through the East state. Once you have your East state, and understand that all Moors know about the East state, but we're lacking in understanding international law, we need a state. Now you have your provincial state government, that's the flag. What's the next exhibit? Your allegiance and oath. Listen, Moors. When you study international law, you're going to find out, when, once you sign an allegiance and oath document, this is like the Moor, brick and mortar, this is the Moor that glues all of this together. Any foreign national who pledges allegiance and oath to another state, it immediately comes under the jurisdiction of that state that they pledge allegiance and oath to. You must understand how important this one document is to all the rest of these documents. Exhibit F, public inauguration video. Moors at home must understand, once you put together your government, all three branches, you put together your ballots and have an election. Once that election is completed, now you set a date for your public inauguration, and you record it, you invite guests to watch it as witnesses. This is very important, Moors at home. Why is this important? Because this is what you call another material fact in real time. Video speaks a thousand words. Video, video, video. And what happens in that video? Well, in that video, it's going to capture what? When you give me your oath and allegiance, you're going to have your left hand on your constitution. That's your tone. It's going to show in the video what? Your state seal. Your seal is going to be shown in the video. And the video is going to have the state flag in your video. And the video is going to show what? The Moroccan Empire flag. What else? Now you're taking your allegiance and oath in front of the world. You tie that together with a public inauguration video. So therefore, Moors want to be de jour. Here are the six documents they need to put on the record called state of facts. Now you can get put together your judicial notice through Consul Court. What is Consul Court doing? Giving the foreign states notice of all six of these exhibits. The seventh document is actually state of facts and judicial notice. But the order you put them in is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, circle seven. We're talking about what exactly is in the state of fact, what you put in that document some other day. This is a study session. How do we do what? Create? How do we put together state status to now correct our status? In fact, we want to determine our destination, okay? What you see up here is a basic template for Moors at home studying. When Moors put together their government, now you utilize the power of your state. Through the state is where you get your sovereignty using Consul Court. So Moors put together their documents at home, that's if they're de jour. You have the East state to the left, the power is always to the left. You have your provincial state government flag to the right, because our provincial state government flag is subordinate to the East state flag. We no longer put the United States of America flag on any of our documents. They are irrelevant. What's relevant? Our own jurisdiction, reclaiming Moroccan law. East state flag, provincial state flag, and your seal in the middle. What does this seal represent? That's your thumbprint. The state. This is the thumbprint of that provincial state government. That must be understood. All state governments have a seal. All cities have a seal. All counties have a seal. All states have a seal. All countries have a seal. It's all about the seal. Now, Moors at home, now you put here, your de jour provincial state government name goes here. Have discipline. Put together your state governments and be de jour. Now, for Consul Court. Consul Court goes here, Consul Court of the State. Underneath that, you put, under the existing sovereignty of the Moroccan Empire. Why is that important to understand? Because you're saying your, your delegation authority order of the state government comes from where? Your provincial state government. But your provincial state government gets this delegation authority from the East state. Because now, under what's called accession and acceptance, we're now claiming the treaties as our own. Keep in mind, Moors, all Moors, when you create your state government, you must now, you must accede through an accession or acceptance of all Moroccan treaties, of all United Nations declarations, of the United Nations Charter, including the ICJ statutes. Moors have to now, through accession, through their government, have all of these laws on the record. Moors cannot claim that they're now using a treaty for their defense. That treaty must be where? It must be on the record as domestic law under your Moors state. The state enforces the law, not the individuals, the state. So Moors, through accession and acceptance, must bring all of the Moroccan laws into your state. We're talking about that another day on how to do that from an administrative perspective, alright? As Moors come into the consciousness of international law, we must start to get familiar with all these different branches of government as it relates to the organization of international law, their committees. So you've got the General Assembly, approximately has one hundred and ninety-three members. Moors, at some point, through Morocco, our third states will become members or non-members. Either way, we will get our secured rights underneath the United Nations Charter. Regardless, even this very day, once you create the constitution, have your inauguration, you immediately come under protection of the United Nations Charter. Why? Because you officially have a state. The United Nations is now obligated to protect state rights. So as you can see, this is just a charter, a chart, showing the International Court of Justice, all these branches, International Criminal Court, Economic and Social Council. Right here, you have the Security Council, we hear about that a lot on TV these days, dealing with Afghanistan, et cetera. You got your five permanent members with the power of veto. You got your Secretary General. And down here, you've got the United Nations Organs and specialized agencies. Here's where you have like your Rights and Dishes People Committee, your committee on dealing with the Convention of Elimination of Racial Discrimination, et cetera. This is where all those committees are located. But this is the hub, and all the rest of this is the spore, okay? So as we start taking more classes about international law, we start understanding what these different branches mean to Moors, alright? We have to start studying international law. One of the things I want the Moors to do is go to Google or whatever, put in Statue of the International Court of Justice, right? Or just find a link. When you click on that, this is the UN Audio Visual Library of International Law. You can find a lot of precedent, you can find a lot of material to study. Moors will have no choice but to study international law inside and out, because everything we do from Consul Court is about international law. So one of the things I recommend when you go to this site here, go to what's called, you got these different tabs, right? Go to what's called mini-series. But as you can see over here as well, you have a lot of different tabs over here. Moors should study all of these tabs, okay? All those tabs. By the way, this is the ICJ. I'll talk about that more in the future as it relates to this being a Moors building. There's a lot of signs and symbols on this building in the hay. It's a Moors building, keep that in mind, we'll talk about that in the future. All the signs and symbols that it represents. And thus, you'll find out why they have fifteen judges, because it talks about it on the exterior of the building itself, okay? Mother, could you read about the mini-series, please?
Can you open it up a little more? The mini-series of the Audio Visual Library of International Law is a series of lectures delivered by leading international law scholars which aims to provide a general overview of the core topics of international law, primarily intended for users with basic or little knowledge of international law. Each mini-series provides a comprehensive introduction of the concerned topic and presents key issues for further study, which are often covered by specialized lectures in the lecture series. A bibliography of materials related to each mini-series is available by clicking the tab Related Materials at the top of the page. The lectures and accompanying materials do not necessarily represent the views of the United Nations. The lecturers have delivered the lectures in their personal capacity, expressing their own views.
Alright, so what is this all about? This is about some Moors at home studying, can also have reference points as it relates to videos where other foreign nationals are talking about certain declarations, treaties, et cetera, okay? On the Law of Treaties, you can go to this video right here, nineteen sixty-nine Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, Lights and Shadows, Mr. Santiago Valapapando, something like that. What you can do is, you can click on this right here. Then you click on video, for those who would like to watch a video from time to time about international law.
Hello, my name is Santiago Valapando. I am the Chief of the Treaty Section at the United Nations Office of Legal Affairs. And I will be given today what will hopefully be the first of a series of lectures on the Law of Treaties. And my objective in this first lecture is to use the nineteen sixty-nine Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties as an entry point to the legal regime that governs treaties in international law. I should point out at the outset that it will not, and do not intend, to give you... I should point out at the outset that it will not, I do not intend to give you a linear description of the provisions of the convention, which I assume you may be already at least acquainted with. Instead, what I will do is to describe the Vienna Convention in light of its legal, political, and historical context, so as to provide you with tools to understand the rationale between this, behind this legal regime, and to assess, now that we are about to reach the fiftieth anniversary of the convention, how it has stood to the trial of time. There are good reasons to choose the nineteen sixty-
Alright, so I just want to give Moors at home just a brief on the fact they're going to watch this video in its entirety. You can see a lot of videos at home, Moors, just keep studying international law. I'm going to go down to what's called diplomatic and consular relations. This is Ms. Philippa Webb talking about consular relations, alright? So Moors at home, we'll watch a little bit of this video. That way, Moors start understanding how to use consular court, consular relations, etc. So what you do is you click on the part, here it is, four parts, okay? You go to video. So this is about consular relations, okay?
I'm Philippa Webb, Professor of Public International Law at King's College London. And in this series on diplomatic and consular relations, I will be giving four lectures. In the first lecture, I introduce the topic and then focus on the diplomatic mission and its features. In the second lecture, I consider diplomatic and consular immunities, special missions immunities, and asylum. In the third lecture, I focus on consular relations, including the important issue of consular notification and assistance. And in the final lecture, I look at what happens when there's a breakdown in diplomatic relations, including the severance of relations and dispute settlement that may arise. So turning to this first lecture on the introduction to the topic and the focus on the diplomatic mission. The concept of diplomacy dates back to ancient Greece. And Sir E. O. Roberts defines it as the application of intelligence and tact to the conduct of official relations between the governments of independent states, as the conduct of business between states by peaceful means, and quoting the Duke of Brudie, "The best means devised by civilization for preventing international relations from being governed by force alone." At its core, diplomatic relations is about sending people to communicate with their foreign counterparts. And even in this digital age, we have not found a better replacement for face-to-face interaction. So in this first lecture, I'm going to first look at the purposes of diplomatic and consular relations. Second, I'll look at the main sources in this area of law. And then third, I'll look at the diplomatic mission, its functions, this concept of inviolability of the mission, and specifically at how we should treat its archives and communications. So turning to the first issue of the purpose. Diplomatic relations aims to protect the interests of the sending state, whereas consular relations protect the interests of nationals. And a key distinction is with whom the different officials interact. If the function is carried out by contacts with the central government, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, or other central government ministries, this will be diplomatic functions. If however, the contacts are more with regional or local authorities, such as regional governments, the police, prisons, or commercial officials, this tends to be consular functions. Diplomatic relations require the recognition of states, whereas consular relations do not. With diplomatic relations, the recognition of the state and the establishment of relations usually go hand in hand. And an offer to establish relations with a newly-formed state will usually imply recognition of that state. Similarly, the disappearance of a state, for example, if it integrates with another state, is followed by the ending of its separate diplomatic relations with other states. This is what happened with the reunification of East and West Germany. There are however, examples where states have recognized each other without establishing diplomatic relations. Consular relations, on the other hand, do not require the recognition of a state or its government. The consular deals with region-
Okay, Moors. Did you hear that? Consular relations does not require the United States of America or the Moors to recognize each other. Consular relations means that Moors are letting the United States of America, or the United States, or there are several states know that you have one of our Moors nationals in your possession, whether it be detained or arrested, whether they're dealing with pre-trial or trial, or whether if it's after the fact. You must understand, we do not have to be recognized by the UN as a state in order to enforce consular relations. That must be understood, there's a difference she's making between consular diplomatic status and consular relations. Consular relations, anyone can use consular relations as long as they have a de jour state of their own. Did you hear earlier when she says, states that are now coming into being recognized? So they're already set on record, third states now making claims dealing with other states, foreign states. They can still use consular relations. Moors must understand that. However, Moors must also understand ultimately that we never need the assent of the United States of America or the United States, or there are several states to enforce our treaties, Article twenty of consular court. That's why consular court is so important, Moors. Because we always have the original jurisdiction, but we've been conquered and now we're trying to get back to a de jour status. So the United States of America is going to try their games of what's called stall, deny, and defend. They're going to try to use their default procedures against us. It will not work, alright? So let's continuously listen to this, this video is about thirty minutes long.
Or local authorities, and not with the central government in most cases. For example, the United Kingdom for many years maintained a consulate in Hanoi without recognizing North Vietnam as a state. The UK also maintained a consular post in Taiwan after it recognized the government of the People's Republic of China. And between nineteen ninety-two and nineteen ninety-five, the UK mission in Belgrade was headed by a charge d'affaire and consular general in the absence of formal recognition of the Federal Republic of Yugoslavia during that period. So turning now to the sources in the area of, this area of law. Unlike men-
Moors at home, what did she just say for the record? There's precedent when a state was not necessarily recognized by the UN. The bad unrecognized state still was protected under the United Nations Charter, i.e. their sovereign state rights were secured by the UN Charter. But even though a state that's recognized by the UN, or a non-member state that's recognized by the UN, dealing with a state that's not recognized, these two states still have to treat each other with peace and dignity, tranquility, amity in commerce, no matter what. Even though this state does not recognize by the UN just yet, still has rights to deal with consular relations if in fact, this state's nationals are now in the hands of a different foreign state. That must be understood, she's talking precedent.
Other areas of international law. Diplomatic and consular relations have two long-established and widely ratified treaties that are widely considered to reflect customary international law. So this makes the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations of nineteen sixty-one and the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations of nineteen sixty-three the starting point and the key reference for both of these topics. These two treaties were adopted within two years of each other in the early nineteen sixties. The articles had been prepared by the International Law Commission with the aim of codifying the existing practice and rules of customary international law. But the conventions also contain some progressive elements, some developments of the pre-existing law. According to Article seventy-three of the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations, the treaties in force before the convention remain in place. And new bilateral agreements that confirm, supplement, extend, or amplify the existing rules may also be concluded. There isn't an equivalent provision in the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations. But in addition to these treaties, of course, diplomatic and consular relations are governed by customary international law, by general legal principles, by bilateral agreements, and also in interaction with national law. And the preamble to the two conventions expressly provide that the rules of customary-
Moors at home studying. Did she say consular relations was secured by state statutes? No. She's talking international law, Moors. Moors must understand, we have to study international law. These are obligations and requirements by all states that are on the record or states that are off the record, but yet, they are de jour states nonetheless. Never ever allow the states, de facto states of the United States of America to tell you as Moors that we don't have jurisdiction of our de jour states. Never allow the United States of America, their de facto municipal corporations, tell us that we can't use consular relations in dealing with them as relates to nineteen sixty-three Vienna Convention on Consular Relations. It is enforced. It is international law, not state statutes, what am I saying? Moors have to stop studying state statutes of the de facto United States of America and their several states. I say again, Moors have to stop studying state statutes of the de facto United States. We must study international law. Thus the reason for the video, so that Moors can see from a different advantage point. What does she say if you use in consular relations? You use nineteen sixty-three consular relations, international law, etc. Let's continue.
International law should continue to gather questions not expressly regulated by the provisions. So I now turn to my third point, which is on the diplomatic mission. There is, in the first place, no requirement that a state establish a permanent diplomatic mission overseas. It may be established if it's considered necessary for the conduct of diplomatic functions, or if the conditions and if the conditions in the receiving state permit the representatives to exercise their functions safely and effectively. A state may also decide that it does not require a permanent embassy if it has a limited political or commercial interest in that particular state, or very few of its nationals reside there. And there are other options for maintaining diplomatic relations outside of having a permanent mission. There can be contacts in the capital of a third state, usually one that's nearby, or in the margins of international organizations such as the UN. There might be occasional special missions to discuss specific issues of mutual interest. There could be multiple accreditation. There can be the protection of the interests of the sending state by a third state. And of course, there could also be diplomatic interests protected by consular relations. Now, the functions of a diplomatic mission are set out in Article three of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations. And this is not an exhaustive list. Some of the functions that it lists are representing the sending state in the receiving state, protecting in the receiving state the interests of the sending state and its nationals, negotiating with the government of the receiving state, ascertaining by all lawful means, conditions, and developments in the receiving state and reporting back to their government, and a general purpose of promoting friendly relations, including developing economic, cultural, and scientific relations. In terms of developing economic relations, this usually refers to the promotion of trade between the two states or the promotion of investment. In the light of Article forty-two of the Vienna Convention, this activity may not be carried out with the purpose of generating profit. And nothing in the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations prevents the performance of consular functions by a diplomatic mission. So there is some overlap between these two areas. Diplomatic agents may exercise consular functions on an occasional basis. And of course, the diplomatic mission acts on the instructions received from the government of the sending state. So even though we don't have an exhaustive list of the functions of a diplomatic mission, there are limits on what those functions can be. A state cannot use mission premises in a manner incompatible with the functions of the mission as laid down in the Vienna Convention or other rules of general international law or any special agreements between the two states concerned. According to Article three of the Vienna Convention, a mission must act within the limits permitted by international law. And duties are owed to the receiving state. The mission must respect the laws and regulations of the receiving state, and it has a duty not to interfere in the internal affairs of the receiving state. In practice, diplomats have occasionally been willing to speak out against human rights violations that they witness or are aware of in the receiving state. For example, when Ayung Sanu Chi was under house arrest in Burma, diplomats from various states called for her release. Similarly, with Nelson Mandela when he was in prison in South Africa. And as I will discuss in the next lecture, there is the issue of diplomatic asylum where diplomats do take a very strong stance towards the receiving state. As Amal Clooney observes in Sato's Diplomatic Practice, "Much of the work of the diplomat in the human rights arena is based on discretion and government guidance. And there is no requirement under international law that a state exercise diplomatic protection on behalf of its citizens. But there are times when the diplomat has a legal duty to act to protect human rights. In the United Kingdom, there has been a case called Abasi in which the court held that there is scope for judicial review of a refusal to render diplomatic assistance to a British subject who is suffering violation of a fundamental human right as a result of the conduct of the authorities of a foreign state." So I now turn to this concept of the inviolability of the mission. This is a concept that is related to immunity but is different from it. Article twenty-two of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations provides that the premises of the mission shall be inviolable, and the agents of the receiving state may not enter them except with the consent of the head of mission. Inviolability is a status accorded to premises, persons, or property physically present in the territory of a sovereign state but not subject to its jurisdiction in the usual way. So this means that the receiving state cannot exercise its sovereign rights in the premises of the mission. There are no exceptions to the rule of inviolability of mission premises, whereas the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations expressly provides that consent to enter is presumed in cases of fire or other disaster. Eileen Denzer has explained that historically, the- there had been this legal fiction that embassies were somehow outside the territory of the receiving state and were regarded as portions or enclaves of the sending state. This is, as she points out, a misleading and dangerous approach. It is now accepted and understood that an embassy is not deemed to be foreign territory. Marriages or crimes occurring on a diplomatic mission premises are regarded in law as taking place in the territory of the receiving state, not the sending state. The residence of the head of mission is considered inviolable as well. This is expressly provided for in Article thirty of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations. The inviolability attaches to the diplomatic agent's status. So it includes inviolability of his or her temporary residence while the diplomat is there. A permanent residence, however, does not lose its inviolable status when the diplomat leaves temporarily. An inviolability is accorded to all property of the diplomat, including bank accounts. Now, there are some exceptions that are laid out in Article thirty-one, for example, of the Vienna Convention. And to just give some practical significance to this concept of inviolability, I want to highlight three interstate cases that considered its application. The first was a-
Okay, Morse. What is she talking about? You have to understand diplomatic relations versus consul relations. When she's talking about diplomatic relations, what is she talking about? She's talking about consulates and embassies. Diplomatic relations, when Morse say they have a consulate, Morse are admitting on the record they're not in Morocco. I say again, when Morse say they have a consulate, they're admitting they're not in Morocco. They're also admitting that they have a temporary residence in someone else's jurisdiction. And their jurisdiction still, let's use United States of America or the United States or their several municipal corporations as an example. When Morse say they have a consulate, Morse are admitting the jurisdiction really belongs to what's called the receiving state. Who's the receiving state in this example? The United States. We're saying as Morse, we're the sending state or that we're the consulate or embassy in the United States of America. When the reality, the United States of America is in Morocco. Morocco is the host country. So therefore, we don't need consulates in our own country. So when Morse say we have consulates, we don't realize, we're admitting on the record that we are in their jurisdiction. And their jurisdiction means they still have some limited privileged jurisdiction over the consulates. But what we must understand is when we say we have a consulate in the United States of America, we're ultimately saying we're not in Morocco. Morse must understand this. Our consulates should always be located in someone else's host country jurisdiction such as China abroad, but not in our own backyard. Our state's status determines the destiny. The destiny of what? Having a Morse state. Well, we can't have a Morse state unless we have a constitution. One day, we will have consulates. That's the last thing on our list, worrying about Morse abroad. We have to worry about Morse in northwest of Mexico. Let's continue with the video.
In the arbitration between Eritrea and Ethiopia and the partial award of two thousand and five. Now, following a drawn-out armed conflict between Eritrea and Ethiopia, a claims commission was set up. And one of the many claims that each side made was a claim by Eritrea that Ethiopian authorities had entered the residence of the Eritrean head of mission without permission. Ethiopia defended its actions by claiming that it had sealed off the residence because of evidence that Eritrea had been using the premises for illegal purposes and they accused it of stockpiling weapons and counterfeiting money. The tribunal held that the Ethiopian security agents who had entered, ransacked, searched, and seized property from the Eritrean embassy residence had done so without Eritrean's consent. And it held that any suspicion of criminal activity, even if justifiable, cannot serve as a defense to breaching Article twenty-two of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations. It held that the residence as part of the diplomatic premises was absolutely inviolable and that these actions had been in breach of international law. The second case is a case that is still pending at this time before the International Court of Justice. It is the case of immunities and criminal proceedings between Equatorial Guinea and France. In this case, there are allegations by French authorities that Mr. Obiang, who has held various senior positions in the government of Equatorial Guinea, has been engaged in misappropriation of public funds. And the investigation is focused on, among other things, a building located at forty-two Avenue Fouch in Paris. Equatorial Guinea has claimed that this address, forty-two Avenue Fouch, is part of the premises of its diplomatic mission in France and therefore enjoys inviolability. When a Paris court found Mr. Obiang guilty of certain offenses, it sentenced him to a three-year suspended prison term and a fine of thirty million euros. And to this end, the tribunal in Paris ordered the confiscation of assets from that building at forty-two Avenue Fouch. So the dispute, which will eventually be decided by the ICJ, is whether, under Article twenty-two of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations, the building constitutes part of the premises of the mission of Equatorial Guinea in France. If the answer is yes, then there could have been some violations of the Vienna Convention. The third case is a case between Congo and Uganda that was decided by the Court, the International Court of Justice, in two thousand and five. The dispute arose from an armed conflict between the Democratic Republic of the Congo and Uganda. And the Congo then brought a case claiming that Uganda had violated various rules on the use of force and non-intervention. Now, Uganda brought a counterclaim in this case, saying that Congolese armed forces had carried out attacks on the Ugandan embassy in Kinshasa in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. And they said that these Congolese forces had attacked individuals inside the diplomatic premises and removed property from the premises, which they said was a breach of Article twenty-two. The court found that the attacks on the Ugandan diplomatic premises did breach Article twenty-two. And they even took quite an expansive interpretation of the protections of Article twenty-two. Because they said the acts of maltreatment by Congolese forces of persons within the Ugandan embassy were necessarily consequential upon the breach of the inviolability of the embassy premises prohibited by Article twenty-two of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations, regardless of the nationality of the individuals or their status as diplomats. So even ordinary individuals without diplomatic status who were within the premises were protected by the inviolability under Article twenty-two. Now, a matching concept to inviolability is the obligation on the receiving state to protect the premises of the diplomatic mission. And this is Article twenty-two, paragraph two of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations, which says that the receiving state is under a special duty to take all appropriate steps to protect the premises of the mission against any intrusion or damage and to prevent any disturbance of the peace of the mission or impairment of its dignity. Even when no active breach of duty has occurred, in practice, receiving states tend to compensate sending states for damage to their mission premises on an ex gratia basis. This duty to protect the premises is one of conduct. It is to take all appropriate steps and it's not necessarily going to result in the total protection of the mission. And I want to mention two International Court of Justice cases to illustrate this point. The first-
Okay, Morse. What are we learning from what she just said? What takes the place of a consulate? It's your state capital building. Wherever your state, Morse state capital building is, that is protected under international law because it has a mission, was a mission, to secure the rights of its nationals. So you have to understand, the United States of America and its several states cannot intervene. The impossibility of performance of treaties or the establishment of our state rights or our state capital buildings. So no matter where we are, when we come together as a collective as Morse, as Morse nationals with a de jure government, we are protected. The United States of America has an obligation to protect us, and guess what? We have an obligation to protect them because they're in Morocco. So Morse must understand, this is what you call in light manner. The treaty means we're supposed to protect them and they're supposed to protect us because we are cohabitating in a treaty together in northwest of Mexico, i.e. Morocco. So what am I trying to get the Morse to understand? It's not that conscience is a bad word. It's to understand that what is its function? Its function is for abroad, outside of Morocco. But inside of Morocco is about what? State capitals. But state capitals are also protected under international law. They can't be attacked by a foreign state.
Is the case of United States diplomatic and consular staff in Tehran, which was decided in nineteen eighty. Civil unrest in Iran had led to various attacks on diplomatic premises, including the US embassy in Tehran. And there were two attacks that formed the subject of the court's consideration in this case. In the first attack on the US embassy, an armed group seized the embassy and took seventy prisoners, including the ambassador, and killed two embassy staff members. In that instance, the Iranian authorities acted promptly in respect of the embassy's appeal for assistance and managed to return control of the premises to the US officials. But then there was a second attack in which the Iranian authorities, according to the US, took no apparent steps to either prevent the attack on the embassy or to cause the militants to withdraw or to stop the attack before it reached its completion. The ICJ held that the first attack did not amount to a breach of Article twenty-two because in that instance Iran had taken all appropriate steps to prevent or stop the attacks. However, the second attack, the court found, did violate Article twenty-two because they found the Iranian authorities were fully aware of their obligations. They were fully aware of the urgent need for action but had failed to comply with their obligations. The second case is the one I-
Okay, what did we just learn? If the United States of America is using treaties, conventions, United Nations Charter, ICJ statutes, as it relates to what? The Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations as well as consul relations? If the United States is cognizant to bring other foreign states into the ICJ or make a report to the UN based upon diplomatic relations or consul relations, that means the United States of America is already on the record setting precedent that they're fully aware that they cannot attack Morse capitals or Morse consulates. Now, so Morse have to take away from this, loudly reading this. So Morse understand, how do we go back and look at international law precedent that the United States of America is fully aware of all their obligations as it relates to Morse, especially Morse are creating a de jure state government. Our de jure state government will have a capital, whatever that capital address is based upon its latitude, longitude of that address. The United States of America can't do nothing to intervene the impossibility of performance of our treaty rights, our sovereign rights. Also, that will extend to our own personal domiciles. Our own personal domiciles will be connected with this as well because we're, some of your government officials are also diplomats. They and their children cannot be harmed because they're diplomatic officers of their government. We'll talk about that another day, alright? So as you can see, what's my point? The United States of America is well aware of what's called diplomatic relations and consul relations as relates to the Vienna Treaty of nineteen sixty-three, alright?
Mentioned previously between Congo and Uganda that was decided in two thousand and five by the court. And here, the court held that it was not necessary for it to establish who had committed the acts in question because in any event, the state had a positive duty to protect the premises. So it stated that although the evidence available is insufficient to identify with precision the individuals who removed Ugandan property, the mere fact that items were removed is enough to establish that the Democratic Republic of the Congo breached its obligations under the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations. So now I turn from the mission itself as a premises and a building to the contents of the mission, such as its archives. The archives and property of the mission are inviolable according to Articles twenty-two and twenty-four of the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations. And Article twenty-four specifically provides the archives and documents of the mission shall be inviolable at any time and wherever they may be. The means of transport of the mission, such as diplomatic cars, are immune from search, requisition, attachment, or execution. Now, the meaning of inviolability of archives has recently been the subject of a judgment of the United Kingdom Supreme Court in twenty eighteen. And the cases are on the application of Bank Court number three against the Secretary of State for Foreign and Commonwealth Affairs, decided on the eighth February twenty eighteen. And I cite a national case here because this specific question of the definition of the inviolability of archives of the mission has not been interpreted on the international level in the same level of detail as this judgment. Now, the background to this case was that a claimant who represented Chagosian residents claimed that the United Kingdom had established a marine-protected area around the Chagos Archipelago for an improper purpose, arguing it was to make resettlement by the Chagosians impractical. Now, in support of this claim, the claimant relied on a document that had been published in newspapers in the United Kingdom that reported to be a cable from the US embassy in London to the US government in Washington and also to the embassy in Mauritius and various other military command posts. This alleged cable had originally been published online by WikiLeaks. Now, the dispute here was that the United Kingdom government argued that the English courts can't admit this alleged cable into evidence because this would violate Article twenty-four of the Vienna Convention on the inviolability of archives and Article twenty-seven on the inviolability of official correspondence. The United Kingdom Supreme Court, after extensive argument, agreed that in general, the inviolability of mission archives meant that they could not be used in a domestic court of a receiving country. of a receiving country, absent a waiver by the sending state. But in this specific case, the court that there were two qualifications to that rule. First, they said the document must constitute or remain part of the mission archive in order to be inviolable. And second, its contents must not have been so widely disseminated in the public domain so as to destroy any confidentiality or inviolability. And in this case, they found there was no evidence to show that WikiLeaks had taken these documents from the U.S. Embassy in London. And they said, once the document had reached the State Department in Washington, it was a document in the custody of the federal government of the United States and not part of the London Embassy Archive. And second, they found that since the cable had been put into the public domain by WikiLeaks and also published in newspapers such as The Guardian and The Telegraph, these publications for which the UK had no responsibility, the cable had lost its inviolability and could be admitted into evidence and used in cross-examination. A related point to this inviolability of archives and correspondence is freedom of communication, which appears in Articles twenty-seven and forty of the Vienna Convention. Free communication is of course critical for carrying out diplomatic functions effectively. And it's provided in the Vienna Convention that this communication may be unrestricted by the receiving state as long as it uses all appropriate means, which may include diplomatic couriers and messages in code or cipher. But it is limited to communications between the sending state's government, missions, and consulates. It does not imply any exemption from charges such as for telephone services. As for correspondence, correspondence cannot be opened by the receiving state. And unlike with diplomatic bags, mission correspondence does not need to bear visible external marks of identification in order to enjoy this inviolability. Listening devices may also violate Article twenty-two on the inviolability of premises and Article twenty-seven on the freedom of communication. In practice, many countries do not adhere to these prohibitions. There is much evidence in state practice of eavesdropping by states on each other. We cannot identify any opinion of yours that supports the assertion that the law has changed since the conclusion of the Vienna Convention. So the inviolability of correspondence and the protection of freedom of communication remain. There is also the specific protections for the diplomatic bag in Article twenty-seven. It provides that the diplomatic bag shall not be opened or detained. The packages of the diplomatic bag must bear visible external marks and may contain only diplomatic documents or articles intended for official use. There are no requirements in the convention for the shape, size, or weight of diplomatic bags, but states have declined to accept trucks, lorries, and aircrafts as being defined as diplomatic bags. Article twenty-seven refers to visible external marks of their character on diplomatic bags, and this is where national law may prove...
What is she talking about, Moors? As Moors have what they call their intellectual property, and Moors travel from point A to point B in their conveyances, oftentimes, we have our political documents with us. Your documents must now be inside of something that's properly labeled as diplomatic. Diplomatic based upon your state. That way, the so-called receiving state, let's use the United States of America as an example, even though they're not the host country of Morocco, but let's use them as an example. Moors, your conveyance has you in that conveyance, first things first. You are part of those diplomatic relations. All of your intellectual property comes up under diplomatic relations. So therefore, Moors have to learn how to now label their conveyances as well as their intellectual property that's on their person as well as inside of their conveyances or inside of their domiciles or at their capital as diplomatic sensitive information. That way, when we're dealing with highwaymen, they have no access to any of these things relating to our Moors state government. So Moors, as we continuously study international law, this is another means of how we protect our sovereignty, alright? I just wanted to show you that. And if you have just a few more minutes left, Moors.
Add more detail on what is required. The UK, for example, requires a seal in wax, metal, or plastic or a tag and a tag or stick-on label addressed to the head of mission, head of a consular post, or the Minister for Foreign Affairs, carrying the official stamp of the sending state or the sending diplomatic mission. So the provision on the diplomatic bag refers to articles for official use, which is also not defined. But in practice, some states have specified, such as the Republic of Korea, that this will be limited to official documents and materials, semi-official correspondence and missions, and other matters recognized as important by a Minister of Foreign Affairs and heads of mission. Under Article forty-one of the Vienna Convention, diplomatic bags may not be used to carry items which are illegal imports under the laws of the receiving state, such as weapons, drugs, or in some states, alcohol. And this is where modern technology has caught up because the Vienna Convention does not require full inviolability, but merely that the diplomatic bag may not be opened or detained. And this has been interpreted by states to allow the possibility of detecting the contents of the bag through X-rays, sniffer dogs, or other forms of scanning. There are examples in state practice of the abuse of the use of diplomatic bags. In nineteen sixty-four in London, a former minister of Nigeria was found in a Nigerian crate at Stansted Airport. Although it was purported to be a diplomatic bag, it did not bear any official seals. And the UK government was able to open it without breaching Vienna Convention. The UK government has since held that the right to self-defense and the duty to protect human life override the obligations under Article twenty-seven of the Vienna Convention. And it would have opened that crate even if it had been properly marked as a diplomatic bag. In nineteen sixty-four in Italy, a diplomatic bag addressed to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs in Cairo was found to contain a drug Israeli national. In nineteen eighty in London, a crate addressed to the Moroccan Embassy was broken open and contained six hundred and thirty-five hundred thousand pounds' worth of cannabis. And in two thousand and twelve, Italian police discovered forty kilograms of cocaine being smuggled into the country in Ecuador's diplomatic pouch. So in conclusion, technology has evolved in terms of surveillance, leaks, means of communication, and even means of transport. Interstate relations have evolved. We have different alliances and different geopolitical influences to those that existed in the sixties. New actors have emerged with an interest in disrupting diplomatic relations, such as non-state armed groups or even corporate interests. But the core principles of diplomatic relations have largely stood the test of time for six decades since the Vienna Convention was adopted. And it is perhaps in the realm of communities where we see the strongest push for evolution and adaptation. And that is the topic of Lecture Two.
Okay, Moors at home. It's good for Moors at home start understanding that in your spare time at home, go back and look at some of these videos. Start learning international law from either audio perspective, video perspective, or just read some of their literature. Moors must understand we have to stop studying the de facto United States of America's statutes or their federal statutes. We must study international law. International law has made it very easy for us to start gaining knowledge. So as you can see, we went on Part One. She has Part Two, Part Three, Part Four. You can watch videos on these different types of topics, okay, Moors? So as we discussed today, what are we really bringing about today in terms of this class? Class number twenty-four. We're starting to understand, when you study international law, you can't use any of these principles unless you have a de jure state government. Once Moors understand the distinction between de facto and de jure state governments, we will start now to move the needle forward. We'll move the ball forward. We will achieve our destiny. But how are we going to achieve our destiny? With discipline. We must be de jure, or the ICJ is going to throw out our courts. We must have discipline to put together the speech of the United States of America, even though they're de facto, they won't accept us because why? We need to give them our state of facts. And what is the state of facts? Exhibit A, Constitution. Exhibit B, state seal. Exhibit C, state flag. Exhibit D, Morocco's empire flag. Exhibit E, allegiance and oath document. Exhibit F, public inauguration video. That's what makes us de jure. So this is the last thing I want to share with you as I wrap up. I'm about to show you a video. It's a motivational video. Steve Harvey. Steve Harvey has done very well for himself. He's had a lot of hard times. Even recently, he's had some hard times. He got into politics and doesn't know what the hell he's talking about. But as far as him being an entertainer or reaching some of the highest levels of entertainment, let's listen to some of the words of wisdom that he can share with us that I think is very germane for Moors to start understanding what is discipline all about. Before I start the video, Moors, don't pay attention to the actual video pictures. Listen to the words. Listen. I know you hear the words, but listen. And go back and watch this video. This video, if you want to find it on YouTube, is called Desire Without Discipline is the Loser's Equation by Steve Harvey. Motivation. Think Moors science. How do Moors acquire our destination, which is what? To create the Moroccan space.
I have failed far more times than I've succeeded. You will never succeed more than you fail. That's not how it works. You know why? Because failure is a wonderful teaching. It's the only way to learn. You have to fail. Failure is a part of the process to become successful. I tell people this all the time. Michael Jordan, the greatest basketball player in the world, he took nine hundred and forty-six game-winning shots. Nine hundred and forty-six times since he was in high school. The ball has been in his hand to take the game-winning shot with no time on the clock. He has only made a hundred and forty-six of those. He has missed over seven hundred times, but he has made a hundred and forty-six. You know what they write about when you make it? They write about when you make it. So guess what? When you get to failing, 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 all you got to do is make one. I've had in my career probably a total of I've been to over two hundred pitch meetings to pitch ideas in Hollywood. Out of those two hundred, they have picked five of them. Two hundred meetings, two hundred show ideas, they've picked five of them. But you know what do five was? Hits. In thirty-three years, five ideas got built. All I need is five hits. Y'all don't even know I was in them other meetings. They don't write about it. They just write about my hits. You just need to hit them. So when you fail, it's part of the process. Keep going. You're supposed to fail. Shit, who you know that gets it right all the time? That's impossible. You have to fail. Matter of fact, when you fail, be glad about it. Every time you fail, you're one step closer. So every time you fail, I say, woo, got that out the way. Go to the next one. Fail again? Okay, I got two out the way. What's going to happen is if you just keep swinging, you're going to get a hit. Through all the things I've gone through in my life, a lot of downs, how did I keep the faith? There was a couple of reasons. Number one, I know from living that if you quit whatever you're trying to accomplish, if you quit whatever you were trying to accomplish can never happen. There's not even a remote possibility. If you quit, there is no chance of it popping back up again, coming back later. Quitting is guaranteed failure. Now, when you're trying, you're going to fail. But quitting just stops you. That was the number one thing I understood. And then number two, you have to make sure that your dreams, your aspirations and goals are so big that not accomplishing them is not an option. You have to want something so big that it wakes you up in the middle of the night. You have to want something so big that you think about it all the time. You have to want something so big that it drives you to wake up when you don't want to. It keeps you up at night when you've long been sleeping. It makes you show up, do things you wouldn't normally do. It requires extra. If you want to be extraordinary and not ordinary, if you want to be ordinary, live your life. But if you want to be extraordinary, you have to be extra. If you put extra on top of ordinary, that word is extraordinary. It requires an extra effort. Now, if you don't want to do the extra effort, you're sitting be regular. There's nothing wrong with being regular. A lot of people are happy being regular. I just wasn't. I ain't want to be regular. I didn't want a regular house. I didn't want a regular car. I didn't want no regular clothes. I didn't want no regular checking account. I just didn't want it. I wanted to have an exceptional home. I wanted to have an exceptional bank account. I wanted to travel to exceptional places. Now, if you don't want that, that's perfectly fine. You can be really happy being ordinary. But if something's burning in you, you got to deal with it. If you don't deal with it, you're going to be disappointed. So being regular, there's nothing wrong with it. Discipline determines your destiny, not your desire. You've heard me say this how many times on the show? Okay, here we go again. I got faith without works is dead. But let me tell you something. To be a hard worker, you got to be disciplined. That's one of the hardest lessons I'm trying to get through to my sons. That an undisciplined man is headed to a life of just... I can't even tell you, man. You're going to throw yourself down a cliff if you're not a young man or a man that possesses discipline. Because they got something for undisciplined people. They got some street laws for undisciplined people and they got some federal laws and state laws for undisciplined people. See, that's why them signs is outside on the freeway. We're going to let you go fast, but seventy is the limit. If you're disciplined enough of a person to leave your house at the time you're supposed to leave your house, seventy miles per hour is absolutely enough. But if you're an undisciplined person, if you don't have the wherewithal to leave your house on time, to go where you want to go, see, the desire is where you want to go. The discipline is how you get there. You know, you understand? You can want to go to see your family in California all you want, but the flight leaves at one eighteen. You leave your house at twelve thirty. They told you, you must check in one hour before your flight. Now, if you ain't got the discipline to get to the airport to check in one hour before your flight, leaving your house forty-five minutes before the flight departs, what you think going to happen? Your desire to go see your family in L.A. is going to be thwarted because you lack the discipline to prepare yourself... because you lack the discipline to prepare yourself and get yourself ready to do the things that you have to do to make your desires come true. I'm telling you, discipline determines your destiny, not your desire. You can write down a list of stuff you want to do all day, but if you don't produce and show the discipline necessary to get there, what you think going to happen? Huh? Okay, I want to be rich. Okay, I want to make four hundred thousand a year. Okay, I want to be the best player that there is. Okay, but you're a pro. See, the cat that's disciplined enough to show up in practice and shoot in jungles when everybody going home, that's the guy that's going to be the best. The guy that puts, that's never late for practice. The guy that's studying the playbook, that's the guy that's going to make it. That's the guy that's going to make it, not the guy that's talking crack. I had stock in that smack. I will make the Pro Bowl. I'm going to make the All-Star team. I'm going to be All-American. That's, that's just what you're saying. But discipline determines your destiny, not your desire. So now let's talk about this discipline. What is that realist being? That's your work ethic. That's your hunger. That's, that's your will. That, that's what you do. That's how hard you're willing to demonstrate. See, it's a live demonstration now. Discipline is how hard you're willing to demonstrate the attributes and the traits to be what you want to be. Did you remember, is your willingness to conduct yourself in a manner that is above and beyond what they, what they say is necessary? When you have a massive goal, something that's big, you must first make it something that not reaching it is unacceptable. Me not living my dream was unacceptable for me. Now, when you get faced with a challenge like living in your car for three years, what happened was, I had, I had a dream that was so big, my dreams were bigger than all my problems. If your dreams aren't really big enough and your problems are bigger than your dreams, then your problems will be bigger than your dreams. But if your dreams are so big, I had no problem that I was not willing to endure to get to my dream. Now, the key, you said it though, was step by step. Remember this saying, inch by inch, anything's a cinch. Inch by inch, see? So you got to set incremental goals along the way. On your way to, let's say you want to be a millionaire, but let's say you only make five thousand dollars a year right now, but you want to be a millionaire. Then you don't got to take whatever you did to make five thousand dollars and duplicate it so you can make ten. But when you make ten, that should be a minor celebration. Then when you make twenty, that should be another minor celebration. Don't stay frustrated because you haven't reached the million. Because you take the wrong term for the million dollars. But let's just say you're making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's another celebration you should have. So you have to enjoy the journey because the journey is not going to change. If you wait until you reach your goal to celebrate, you're going to be, it's mentally debilitating. So you have to have monumental steps along the way and just make inch by inch, anything's a cinch. Set very doable goals as you're trying to reach the impossible thing.
Your reality is yours. Stop wasting time looking at someone else's reality while doing nothing about yours. Steve Harvey. So what's Steve Harvey trying to tell the Moors? The Moors have to now put together the state provincial governments. Inch by inch. What are we talking about? The Moors have to take the time to come together as a collective in their groups. Put together a government. You need your legislative branch. You need your executive branch. You need your judicial branch. Put together your elections with your ballots recorded. After you have your elections are, are official, set up your inauguration. That way it's public. Record it. Have your oath of allegiance. Put together your administrative documents. But obviously, in order to do all that, you need a constitution. ADPAC will talk about Moors in the future about the constitution. How can we put together what's called maybe a boilerplate or a template as relates to a constitution? We'll talk about these type of things in the future to see what other Moors have that have already put together a government. Obviously, ADPAC has a constitution. But we'll talk about how can we all come together as alliance to understand how do we use the power of our constitution to create the states? But what do we need ultimately? We need discipline to remain the course, alright? I am with that. Islam.